Ladies and gentlemen, let me open a joint public hearing, City Council, City of Pearland, and the Planning and Zoning Commission, City of Pearland, for Monday, January the 29th, And I'll ask the Chairman of the Planning Commission to read into the record the purpose of our hearing tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. This is for the amendments to the thoroughfare plan, this is a request to the City of Pearland for proposed amendments to the thoroughfare plan.
And with the opening of the amendment, the plan is a request to City of Pearland for proposed amendments to the thoroughfare plan. Staff report.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Before we begin tonight's proceedings, we're going to go over a brief presentation that will provide you with an update of the entire night's proceedings, and then, in just a few moments, Mr. Robert Upton will get up and talk about the thoroughfare plan itself. Tonight's discussion regarding the thoroughfare plan, it's a minor update to the plan, and in essence, what you'll see included in your packet is information on roads that have been added, streets that have been added, classifications that have been added based on the growth in the community. This is an important document when used throughout the city, specifically when developments come in, and in just a few moments after we go over the introductory information, Mr. Robert Upton will provide you some more detail on the actual thoroughfare plan update.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Branson. So tonight, before we get started, we're going to go over a few housekeeping rules. So tonight, we have one joint public hearing, which is AIR 18-001, which is the amendments to the thoroughfare plan, and also, we have one joint special meeting, CUP 17-00020, 2944 South Sam Houston Parkway. Format of hearing and meeting, so each item has a public hearing or meeting conducted as follows. There will be a call to order, staff presentation, applicant presentation, public comments in support or opposition, and if you're going to speak in support or opposition to the project, please come forward to the microphone, please state your name and address for the record, please be brief and to the point within a three-minute timeframe, and also, please complete a speaker's card and give it to the recording secretary, which is over there on the left-hand side. After that, there will be council, planning commission, and staff discussion, followed by adjournment. After the joint public hearings, Planning and Zoning Commission will hold their regular meeting tonight after the public hearings later this evening to vote on the zoning item recommendations. Speaking at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting is at the P&amp;Z's discretion, and the council meeting dates for first and second consideration for these items are February 12th, 2018, and February 26th, 2018.
Robert Upton, City Engineer, also, good evening, Commissioner, Chairperson of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and the commission itself. Thank you for your time tonight. As Mr. Branson stated earlier, this is just a minor update. Development has happened at a rapid pace throughout the city, and one of our tasks is to go through and take a look at the lines that we had done many years ago in the comprehensive plan, and also looking at a thoroughfare plan, and we're looking at lines when they were undeveloped, pieces of parcel. They have now been developed, and so now, we've taken the time to go back and take those roads that have been classified as minor collectors, major collectors, thoroughfares, and major thoroughfares, and then to align them now with what is out there on the ground. So, taking a look at that, the map you have there, we've identified many of the areas that we would like to talk or present to you. Excuse me. I will not go through. I will not go through all of those, but I'll give you some highlights, for example. If we take a look up in the Kirby area, which I identify as number one, which will be on the upper portion of the slide, that area is the extension of Spectrum Boulevard, that, as you know, is being under construction, and taking a look at that development, and moving forward with the development up there through the PDDC. Another area, if you take a look down, is item six. That area was planned to be kind of a major or a minor collector or minor thoroughfare up through and connecting in what's now the Ivy District, and with that, though, that would have to clear over Clear Creek. We just don't make that a good sense, going through Buc-Ee's and going over that direction, so we're looking to remove that from the thoroughfare plan. So that's an item there. As we take a look down, if we go through and take a look south of Shadow Creek Ranch area, around the high school, item number 14 and item number 18, development has come in there. Basically, the high school was planned as a development at one time, Shadow Creek High School. That's not going to happen now with the high school being built, so it doesn't make sense to have that identified on our map as a thoroughfare plan. Therefore, we recommend removing that. You'll take a look at, then saying, the same aspect with item 12. Item 12 on that road, Windward Bay. Windward Bay has been built, and that has been built to the minor collector standards of 60-foot, and we want to identify that as a change, not a major, but as a change to that, to show the connectivity going north and south. As we head down further south in our area of our ETJ, you can see in the area of Lakes of Savannah, item number 24, there was plan there before Lakes of Savannah was there, was to have a collector in that area, and that now follows the pattern of Laurel Heights, if I remember my streets correctly. And so, with Laurel Heights now throwing that curve and then tying back into Savannah Parkway, it makes better sense to follow what was developed. Let's, as we head, for example, as we head east of 288, item number 15 has been identified on our thoroughfare plan, and actually, that is a private road that is part of the commercial development there. That will not be turned over to the city, and so, we want to remove that one. And these are, like I said, these are minor updates, simple things that we can do as development has happened. We're looking in the future, as we go along, as later this year, to take a look at a major update to the thoroughfare plan, but that would be in the need of a consultant to assist us through some of our traffic modeling, also to tie in when the comp plan gets updated as well. So these are just minor changes that we've seen over time, that we believe we should recommend and get approval for. Another example would be item number 28. Item 28 is going up Woody Road. We've classified that as wanting it to be a minor thoroughfare, however, the aspect of that is that there's not enough road width in there. So it just makes sense to stay in the lower classification, so we recommend changing that between 518 and Orange Street to a lower classification.
Robert, is it possible to use the pointer to the road that you're working, talking about, perhaps?
Is there a pointer?
I think I'm looking at the wrong road when you talk.
Okay. Here we go. Let's just take a look. I'll just kind of recap. Here's item one, real quick. This was up in the Kirby area that we talked about. This is the area off of 2234. This is the area down here that we talked about, Windward Bay, about having that road classified. It was built to a minor collector, and same with Laurel Heights down in the Lakes of Savannah area. Here's the area in front of what I'll say is the area where Target and the movie theater is located. That's a private road, has always been platted as a private road. Excuse me. So it does not meet city criteria. We'd like to remove that one. As I mentioned over here, following the hand up on the screen is Woody, and that's the one we talked about reducing the classification on, as if the attempt to get the appropriate right-of-way would be too close to the existing residence. And then, over in this area, right over here, as we talk about, this is Riverstone, and these were, of course, our ideas in terms of that, as the development was planned. These are the better, following the formal development of Riverstone, showing the correct width of the right-of-way. Then finally, down here at the very bottom, we'll take a look at the Massey Oaks development. We had some ideas back in many, a few years ago, in terms of how we want to serve that property in the city with roads as that development comes in. Now, we're saying is that per their proposed development, this would be the alignment for number 41 through Massey Oaks development. And so, those are highlighting some of the changes that we recommend. Example also is Bailey Road has been built to its ultimate width. In the existing thoroughfare plan, it shows as items to be acquired. So we also did some of those updates where we've already acquired the right-of-way, we've built the roads, and we need to change that classification of that line type on the road to a solid line. So that's what recommended for item number 36 as an example. So some of those, those are the highlights overall, with regards to the minor updates that we can do as staff, we feel that are most appropriate for us, and moving forward in the coming future later this year, as I said earlier, and working with the comprehensive plan update as well, and trying to tie those together to do a major update, that we can take a look at some areas of classifications. Thank you.
Does that complete the staff report?
Yes, sir, it does. Thank you very much.
Okay, with the completion of the staff report, does the applicant wish to make a presentation? Are you still on that?
No, no, no. They agree with that.
Okay, yeah. I know.
Mayor?
I'm looking at you as the applicant.
I have no further comments, sir. I've made my presentation as the applicant and also as representing the city on that, so no further comments from me, sir.
Very good, very good. Staff, have you had any wrap-up comments at this point? Good. Moving to item three on our collective agenda, person to work, speak for or against this proposed request. Is there anyone here that would like to speak for or against this request? We have one right here. Would you present that for us?
Typically, we would discuss items that are actually on the list. This one's not on the list, but if you'd like to make some comments, this specific street is not on the list, but if you could give your name and address and limit your comments to three minutes, we'd appreciate it, and thank you for being here today.
You bet. Thank you. Thanks for this opportunity. My name's Corbett Post. I live at 2204 Roy Road, which, on the map, I'll attempt to find that without messing this up. Should be this road right here. My comments would be regarding this area of Hughes Ranch Road. Hughes Ranch Road has already been widened from this area right here. Here's Hickory Slue Sports Complex, if you're familiar. My property being on Roy Road, as this line is drawn, would actually become a corner lot. We've got five acres in what's left of the country of Pearland, and we enjoy it, it's pretty nice and good solitude out there. But my concern is if that, this project was taken on through, that would definitely impact the property that we have developed for our private use. It also makes little to no sense to me to carry on this road up until this point if there's not going to be a connector through these two places right here, so I would ask that whenever that does fall within the realm of council's change to maybe affect that change and consider dropping that project, as it makes best sense to save taxpayers' money on that. That would conclude my comments, I believe. Thank you.
Good. Does the council have any requests, comments on this particular item, either plus or minus at this point?
I do, Mayor. Can I get some more details on the removal of six from staff? I'm trying to picture that and where that Buc-Ee's and everything is right there, because without an aerial, it kind of makes sense to me to keep going up, which I'm sure is why it was on there to begin with, but I'm assuming...
Sure, Councilman Orno. It is kind of hard when we're looking at this type of size without having the aerial and zooming in. This is at the light where you can turn right into Buc-Ee's.
And a dead end.
And a dead end currently, right now, and that's right where the new learning center, the child's learning center that's built, right near where Economic Development Corporation headquarters is right now until they move back to City Hall. The issue being is that, looking at the plat as well, and I'll need to verify, and I'd like to turn that back over, but I recall looking at the plat, is that it's not dedicated right-of-way, it's dedicated easement through there. So right-of-way would have to be acquired. So it doesn't make sense there, but then also, that ends right at Clear Creek, and trying to pass that over and then mirror into what's going on with the Ivy District, doesn't make sense where it'd be better to have the roads on the other side, which likely be the extension of Frugee, or we tie in with North Spectrum is what's already being done.
Detention.
And detention, thank you. The detention basin, the regional detention basin is happening right on the other side as well, so that... That type of discussion, that type of avenue with staff makes it very easy to do as a minor update, because we can already look economics-wise, it just doesn't, you know, trying to cross over Clear Creek, trying to cross over the regional detention basin, that would be expanded as well.
Okay, that makes a little more sense. And then, I just have some general comments. You know, our growth is going to continue, really what I think should drive, when we look at a major update of this, is the growth that's coming to the south of us. I mean, we're thinking 200, 225,000 people is going to be a lot in Pearland, and it will be a lot, but the numbers south of us are closer to 700,000. Something tells me most of those are going to want to go through us to Houston. So, we've done a lot of work east to west because our geometry forces us east and west. I think we also need to make sure we look north and south. I'm hoping with the change in leadership in Manville, that maybe we can get some joint meetings with Manville, or at least staff working together, because if those roads can align, it's going to make it a lot easier for people to get through Pearland. And whether we like it or not, they're coming through us, so I would like to make that as smooth and seamless as possible, as not to adversely affect our residents. To the road that was mentioned in public comment, I want to see it connected and go all the way through it. And that brings me to the next thing. Does that make sense today? No, today, it probably doesn't make sense. Connecting McCalla to Veterans at this moment makes no sense. In the grand scheme of things, in the next 20, 30, 40 years, it makes a lot of sense. It connects U of H all the way to Highway 6. And if anyone in here can tell me what Pearland's going to look like in 30 years, I'll be happy to listen, but I can tell you, being here over 30 years, we had no idea it would look like it does today. So, I would rather have items, especially major roadways, stay on the thoroughfare plan, rather than a knee-jerk reaction of, let's remove these because they don't make sense today, and then 30 years from now, we need them, and the landowners along that strip had no way of knowing that this could possibly come through. To me, it's a whole lot easier to keep it on the thoroughfare plan and never use it than it is to remove it, and then all of a sudden, come back to property owners and say, yeah, we took that off the thoroughfare plan 20 years ago, but now we need it. And there's some other discussions that go along with that, that we can have at a later date, but as far as looking at the plan, I would rather overplan than underplan, because growth is coming.
And I think one of the things it does do is to open up some of the dead-end streets that are then needed to go through and connect to other arterials, so I think it frees up the flow of traffic inside the city limits. And several of those I looked at in the past, always wondered why it didn't connect to another thoroughway, thoroughfare, and here, we're addressing some of that now, so I think that's a plus. Anything else from council?
Yes, Mayor. So I've got a couple of comments. Obviously, this would be something that was...
Go ahead.
This is something that, you know, I appreciate and understand the necessity of the need for the thoroughfare plan. Traffic got to move through the city, and we're not a gridded city, we're not Arizona or Phoenix in Arizona where they established a grid early on. Thoroughfares are more difficult to plan here. We do need to look forward, not look back, and not be reactive. That being said, we don't need to be completely oblivious to the impact of the thoroughfare plan as the way our criteria is written right now. It does have an impact to owners, to landowners, and right now, what we're communicating to some of them is, you're going to do a small addition, we're going to make you plat, and in that plat, we're going to take your land, we're not going to compensate you because we may build a road sometime in the future. That is, right now, that is one of the principal uses of this document. It can be modified by us at any point. At some point, a council decided that they didn't want Orange to connect to Hughes Ranch. Now, we want to come back and say, well, maybe we would do want to connect, so now we're going back and forth. You know, I want to honor what was the will of the council at the time, and make a logical connection or make a logical decision, if the roads aren't going to connect, do we want them to connect? Do we want them to extend? That's not the only place. There's a few places where staff has seen that there is need to possibly address not connecting the roads. With respect to traffic moving north-south, look, that's arguable, how traffic's going to move through Pearland. Right now, we have a significant amount of our traffic that moves south, not north. It's going to Lake Jackson and Freeport. That may be the trend. We may be the nexus of where travel is going north and south, we don't know. More importantly, traffic going through municipalities, that's a responsibility of Tech Dot. We're supposed to deal with the traffic that's inside of us, the major corridors that come from Highway 6 up to U of H, that's 35, that's Tech Dot. They're the ones that are supposed to manage that. We can't widen our roads so much that they become freeways, and a freeway is what's designed to deal with that kind of traffic. So, I think that it makes a lot of sense to me to, right now, remove the portion of Parky and Orange that extend. We know we're not going to build it, we're not going to build it anytime soon. Ultimately, our decision is, if we feel like that road is viable and necessary, we can always add it back. It's just a matter of what the consequence is at that time. At some point, we decided we don't want them to connect. I don't see that we're ever going to make a decision, really, to connect them. I'm not in agreement to connect them back after we've already decided not to, so I want us to be careful about a whole lot of back and forth. Again, and also be conscious of what this document does, particularly on the plating aspect. I know that that's something that at least me and one other council member have talked about, needing to communicate with staff about how we want to change the UDC and how this tool is used, and how the plating tool is used when it comes to right-of-way allocation. But right now, I love what we're doing to clean up the areas, particularly out on the southwest side. I think we need to go ahead and abandon the portion of Hughes Ranch that's extending that's not going to continue, the portion of Orange on the other side that's not going to continue. I think we do need to have a discussion about what we're going to do with McCalla and Veterans, is that actually going to happen? I don't see it possibly, but maybe when we do the major thoroughfare update, we can study that area and see how likely that is. That's all I have, Mayor.
So a few things. Councilman Perez just mentioned old councils, and from what I'm understanding, you were saying, you know, we should honor what they did. I mean, that's, we didn't get elected to honor what old councils did, we got elected to do what we think is right right now. With all due respect to anybody who's on an old council, I mean, it's been said many times, budget-wise, that we, you know, old council made decisions that put us, you know, to a certain extent, in a hole, and so, I mean, if we see change, and the city has changed since those old councils, then we need to take note of that and make those changes with respect to the streets. North and south, I agree with Councilman Orno. I mean, there's going to come, regardless of whether or not we want it, it's Tech Dot's decision or our own decision, we should look at the possibilities of other streets besides 35 and 288 going north and south all the way through. Cullen, maybe, or some other street that we can, you know, go ahead and take advantage of right now, because we saw the same thing happen with the city of Houston and Harris County specifically, when we wanted Cullen to be developed, and just now, just in the past two years, they just now decided to develop Cullen. They didn't see any financial benefit, they didn't see any, you know, whatever it was that they didn't see, we wanted them, we went to them and asked them, hey, can you all do this? This was old councils that went to them, and they were like, no, no, we don't have any reason to. Well, it'd be crazy for us to say, you know, we don't have any reason to wait on Tech Dot to do it, but, you know, at the end of the day, we can all sit down, like you said, and decide that, and decide how Hughes Ranch, you know, develops, and every other street that has a dotted line that, you know, may not go all the way through. Specifically, though, I did have a question about, I know 15 is a private road, but I don't see highlighted on here the feeder road, and the feeder road that's going to come off of 288, and I know Councilman Perez had brought this up, and myself, this was a while back, about six months ago, you know, are we going to, is that something that we're going to...
Entrance.
The exit and entrance ramp going northbound on 288, you know, is that something that we can kind of expedite and make happen a lot sooner than later? But I don't even see it, I know it's not on here as a change, but it's not even highlighted as something that we plan on doing. I mean, I see some other bold blue, but then that one's just like a thin blue. And so, last time, I know I asked about it, you know, and since we are addressing thoroughfare plan, it was said that maybe 2025 or something like that, is there any plans for expediting that?
Mayor Pro Tempore, the answer is, it's on the thoroughfare plan, it's right where my hand is at, on the screen. It is there, it's identified, but because it's so small, you can't quite distinguish it between the main lanes that are in there. And yes, per the HGAC timeline and partnering with AT20 with Tech Dot, yes, it is planned for 2025. However, the city and county are in discussions about how we can accelerate that, and we are also in discussions with Tech Dot to be able to move that forward as well. And so, we're working with the county to partnership, to see what options are out there with the 288 contractor as well. So yes, we are looking at that and exploring that actually right now.
Thank you.
Does the other call, Mr. Kalasen? Mr. Pollock?
Yep, Mayor. If I could ask staff to, could you explain number two a little bit? I think you referred it as a jug handle.
Councilman Carbone, I will, I'm kind of chuckling, so I'll have to answer that question. That was something that was put there probably during the development of potentially the 288 toll roads or corridor upgrades. It was an off-ramp style type setup to allow traffic to come off and then curl over. It's not going to happen with the 288 toll road and the lanes coming in there, or the managed lanes improvement in there, and so, we feel it's best just to remove that off of this map, because it's, yeah.
And then, on Hughes Ranch, how come there's not a segment connecting those, that gap right there?
And we'll point right where my hand is located. I will have to do some more research and get back to you. That has, that has been that way for many years, in terms of looking back at old thoroughfare plans, but with regards to that, that was a decision that was made during an update, and that was removed. And I think it has to do something with the development that was there, and council, and those politics at that time, is what I have to say.
Yeah, if memory serves me correct, there's a subdivision right there.
Yes.
And it's never fun putting a road through a subdivision, but...
And Councilman Orno, not to, I apologize for interrupting, but there's also a, and let me move my hand over one street, right here where my hand is at. I know there was discussions, discussions at that time, talking about extending Orange Street, that would have been over towards Kelly Lane, which is the road just basically right here that kind of rounds and does a, kind of a dog leg, but there was opposition to that, and then I believe there were some discussions with the landowner in here who would prefer it to be on the north side at that time, so it got moved up to the north and then dead-ended there at that point on O'Day. And so... So it got moved up to the north, and then dead-ended there at that point on, on O'Day. And so, therefore, not connecting through on Marshall Lane over to Garden. So there was discussions well before my time.
And, Tony?
Mayor, if, if that's not going to connect, I don't, well, right now, the sports complex, that's where 1128 is going to be widened. I mean, that, that makes a, in my mind, a good place for Hughes Ranch to dead-end into, if it's not going to go any further. I mean, if it's not going to connect all the way through, then I, I think it makes sense to stop it there, especially when you go, you know, a few miles to the north, and you've got McCard that's going to punch all the way through that ties into Pearland Parkway. So I, I'd be in favor of removing those, those segments right in there.
For full disclosure, what I'm about to ask about, my family does own some land, and I'm just curious, 43 down at the bottom, is that a new segment?
No, under the old maps, let me...
Because I just remember the little ones coming in and ending in that piece of property.
Forty-three, actually, the extension of that, we were looking, of course, as always with the east-west, based on the projections of what could be developed there. Carrying Massey Oaks all the way through that development, makes sense to have more of a, a, what we call a minor thoroughfare in there, and eliminating some of those, what we say, major collectors, or minor collectors. And that way, you have better east-west, and then allow the rest to be residential, instead of having all these 60-foot feeds in there.
Okay. I, I, personally, I kind of like that. Now, what I'd like to see, and would never happen in my lifetime, I don't think, is 43 to continue over to the east and connect to whatever road that is that goes back up towards the north. But, you know, those are, that, that area developing in the next 20 years will be interesting, I, I think, but it is a possibility.
I guess a concern I, I have is, on, anytime we do any expansion on this or update the thoroughfare plan, how is the property owner notified of this, and what's the proceedings that we do once we decide that this road is going to go through somebody's property? How, how is that going to work as far as like when we go to obtain that property to expand that roadway or extend it?
Well, as the, as the process is right now, and that's how we had a gentleman who came, came forth and spoke, it is advertised. This process was advertised publicly in the newspaper, as required, through the community development group. But if you're talking about when roads take a look, when we'll give an example of item number 43, as Councilman Ordno brought up, when that development comes in, because that's a large acreage, when that development comes in, during that plating process, that's when that transportation group is talked about in terms of what's your road network looking like. It's exactly the same thing we've been doing with the Massey Oaks development, too. What's your road network? Here's our projections, working with your traffic impact analysis that they develop, in coordination with our regional plan as well. So that's how that's looked at when development comes in. As we take a look, for example, Hughes Ranch Road that we're building right now, that we're putting the water line in and planning to look at building later this year, provided everything goes, goes per plan, is that we worked with the property owners up and down, it was on the thoroughfare plan, it was planned as part of an eighty-twenty split with Tech Dot, and we went out and we acquired what right-of-way we needed to, and went through the appraisal process. So sometimes it's individual, one-on-one discussions, but also moving forward through that process.
Basically, the, this meeting, and I, I, I think I know why the gentleman spoke, and probably wasn't because of the publication in, in the newspaper, unfortunately, because honestly, and I get in trouble every time I say this, that I'm being mean to residents, or I'm, I'm being ugly to people. People don't pay attention to their local government and what's going on until something affects them directly. So, you know, and, and the acquisition of land, I am the other council member that, that has an issue with it. It's just, it's not something that, I haven't mentioned it because it's not on the agenda tonight. I, I think talking about it goes against Open Meetings Act, so we can have that discussion at some point. You know, this discussion at this time is, where do we see roads? Where do we see the need moving forward?
Tune in.
Since I'm the only one left here from the old council.
Five years that council...
One of the concerns that we had, you know, was certainly getting Alvin and Manville and traffic through there. And so, our big concern is with the northwest connection, I mean, north and south connections. And we felt like, okay, in Friendswood, you've got 2351, you've got Dixie Farm Road, you've got Pearland Parkway now, you've got 1128 that could be used, you know, or is used for that. And then you have Cullen, and then you get over to 288 and going over, so, and 35. And so, we felt like, you know, we were fastly becoming a cut-through city for Alvin and Manville, which we thought would add a lot of traffic within the city. And really not taking care of the Pearland residents, get them moving back and forth, north, south, east and west. And so, we looked at, look at, part of that, of coupling all that together, and we were more concerned with the east-west connections, and that's why we put McCard through there. And to do that, was be able to get people going east and west. And we felt like there was another avenue there for Alvin and Manville to get their people up through there. And of course, they can use Highway six and go straight on out if they'd like, which is a six-lane road, which doesn't have a lot of traffic on it. But, so, that was a reason that we looked more on the east-west connections than we did on the north-south, because we figured we had five or six connections north-south to get the people through. And that was one of the problems that we were looking at, is trying to contain this area here, being able to get our residents in Pearland, east and west, and north and south, and not so much after you give five or six roadways to Alvin and Manville for them getting their people north and south. And, you know, in Pearland Parkway now, at five o'clock, I've seen it backed up from Exxon all the way to 518. And it's just, you know, that little stretch there takes you 15 to 20 minutes to get through. And a lot of that traffic is going, continuously going on north and, and our south and connecting on to Dixie Farm Road. So, that's a lot from the old council.
Councilor, for the wrap-up comments?
Yeah, just one small one, Mayor. On the southwest corner, Robert, that S shape that comes across, the minor collector that comes across, what is the, what is the idea there?
Do you have, I apologize, do you have a number that can get me in the right direction?
It's not a number, it's, it's not a change. It's on the southwest corner, nearest to 24, the very southwest, it extends outside of our ETJ.
Yeah, I, I see it. Let me move, let me move the hand over so we can all get in the right spot.
Right over there.
Right. I would have to say it's probably just taking a look at what the connection would be off of the, I want to say, I think that's 58, future 58, as Friendswood Development is continuing to develop Lakes of Savannah. And to make sure it comes in as a, a 60-foot connection right there, and looking at a, a better intersection.
It's mostly for the intersection?
I would say yes. That would, that would be my interpretation, based on what I'm seeing, taking a look at that area.
I'm sorry, that, that brought up one legal question. What rights do we have in the ETJ as far as thoroughfare plan goes?
Generally speaking, because it's a product of plating, we can require, you know, the dedication through the plating process. And so, it does cover city limits and the ETJ.
So it does make sense to keep a thoroughfare plan and then ETJ?
Yes.
Okay.
The south end of that street, it's outside of our ETJ.
Okay.
That's why the question arrived.
Mr. Chairman?
I don't have any comments.
Equal opportunity.
It's a minor update. In major updates, you're going to have public meetings and...
All the things we talked about that are major updates.
Right, those are major updates. This is cleaning up the...
I don't have anything to add, Mayor, so thank you. Nothing to add, Mayor, thank you.
Mayor, if I could add, if it's not too big of a problem, if GIS could provide us a map that shows an aerial with this overlay, that would be great.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of difficult to figure out what it is, it's just numbers. Maybe we could have a little bit better map.
And procedurally, can I ask, so this will go to, to P and Z for a vote, and then come back to us for first and second reading?
That's correct. It actually is scheduled this evening on their agenda. I heard you say that what you'd like in the future is an aerial that shows this as well. Plus, when we bring it back to you for your consideration, we'll have a first and a second reading, and we can make changes after that first reading as well.
Okay, thank you.
Staff, have any wrap-up comments?
I was just going to say, I believe it's currently scheduled for February the 12th and then February the 26th.
And that would only be the numbered items?
The 12th, 26th?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And the staff, Robert, do you have any wrap-up on this?
No, sir. I was just hearing the comments and questions. City Attorney Coker is correct, we're planning to come before the 12th and 26th of February, and for your approval at the ordinance style, and then, of course, planning a zoning commission tonight.
All right, good. I think it's been a good workshop, so we can kind of work this out a little bit. Unless, council have any wrap-up, last-minute wrap-up, Carbone? Did you have one?
Yep, thank you, Mayor. If we did want to make an adjustment to Hughes Ranch, how's that going to work procedurally? Or would it be easier to throw a number, a number on it, just to make it for discussion going forward?
Yes, sir. We'll number it for discussion, because right now, it's not on that as any time of discussion. We're only discussing the items that are numbered. So, at your direction, we'll put a number on that, so it'll be further discussed.
Hundred and four, hundred and five?
I can go 120?
Okay. Whiskey Tango Foxtrot.
Let me move down to item four, which let me adjourn this public, joint public hearing, which I shall do at 7:11. And open a planning and zoning commission, part of our agenda tonight, and, which is to ask the, ask, have you gotten that, but chairman? Would you present the reason for, for being here tonight?
Yes, Mayor. I'll start with the roll call, roll call, planning and zoning commission. Let's record to show that all commissioners are present, with the exception of Mary Starr.
Okay, with that information in the record, let's move to application information case summary. Staff report.
You'll go ahead and read.
You'll go ahead and read number one for the conditional use permit application number CUP 17-00020.
Thank you. This is item one, conditional use permit application number CUP 17-00020. This is a request of TN Associates Incorporated, applicant on behalf of SS Sun Power Incorporated, representing Serge Singh and Ying Tan owners for approval of a conditional use permit CUP to allow for a restaurant with no drive-in or drive-through services, Catfish Station, located in the light industrial M1 zoning district on approximately 1.9755 acres of land. Thank you.
Information read, with staff report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council on Planning and Zoning Commission member. This is a CUP request for, I'm trying to turn on the PowerPoint so you can see the presentation. So this is a, a CUP request for a, a restaurant in industrial zone district.
Would you move a little closer to the microphone?
Okay.
Shall we hear you?
Sure. The property is located in an industrial zone along Sam Houston Parkway, close to 288 Highway. The surrounding area is a business park on the east side, and on the south and west is undeveloped property, and there is an existing gas station in the property. And as you can see, this is a zoning and aerial map of the property, it's located in the corner of Sam Houston and Tom Bass Park. And this is future land use plan, that shows that this is an light industrial zone in this district. This is a view to the north of the property, and this is a view to the south of the property. This is a view to the east of the property, and this is a view to the west side of the property. Prior to JPH, we received one return notice and approved in favor of the proposed conditional use permit. Code conformance table. The CUP request is in conformance with comprehensive plan, and possibly with the future land use plan for Lloyd Industrial. It's also in conformance with thoroughfare plan, and also UDC. The property is already platted and has access to city, water and utility line. This is the criteria for approval. Staff recommends approval of the requested CUP for a restaurant on the approximately 1.9755 acre site for the following reason. The proposed use of a restaurant is compatible with the, and preserve the character and integrity of adjacent development and neighborhood. The proposed use does not generate pedestrian and vehicle traffic which would be hazardous or complete with existing and anticipated traffic in the neighborhood. And that finishes the staff.
I complete your report. Oh, very good. Let's move to item two, which is, let the, opportunity for the applicant to share his vision with us. And if you please come up to the podium and, and tell us about your project. Thank you for being here tonight. Be sure and introduce yourself so we can know who you are, and maybe, maybe your address would help us.
Hello, council. Hi, everyone. My name is Jing. I am the biggest franchisee for Catfish Station, which is the restaurant that is, we are pondering up with co-branding with Mr. Singh's gas station. So, this is my ninth project with Catfish Station, and first in Pearland. So, and I can tell you guys that I'm very excited, and it's not going to be my last. So, and I think the restaurant, if I can remember correctly, it's about 1,800 square feet with no drive-through. So, it's a very busy traffic area. I think, I believe that with all the industrial residential area, my restaurant, which is a fast food slash casual dining restaurant, will serve the people very well and the businesses very well in that area. So, that's pretty much everything I need to say about the restaurant itself, you know. So, very excited.
That, that's your story.
That's, that's the story.
Good, okay. Well, appreciate, appreciate you giving us an update on that. We'll, we'll be visiting with you more later.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Are there anyone in the audience that would like to step forward to the podium and share with us your, either support or in opposition to this proposed request? Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to enter into the record, a comment, statement, or testimony in, either in support of or in opposition to this proposed request? For the third and final, for the third and final time for requesting this, before I move forward in the agenda, is there anyone in the audience who would like to enter into the record, and enter into the, either in support of or in opposition to this proposed restaurant? and enter into the, either in support of or in opposition to this proposed restaurant construction? And hearing done, let's move to item B on our working agenda, which is allow the planning commission staff make, and the staff do the discussion, starting with the Planning and Zoning Commission, Mr. Chairman.
Thomas? Is, is this one already built? The building's already built? I believe so. So, whenever it was approved originally, it looks like it was designed for retail, and they want to swap the retail out for a restaurant. Is that, is that what we're looking at?
I believe, the use for the building, I'm not sure about the details of the building.
So, what the applicant is requesting is a restaurant to come in in addition to the gas station. So, the reason why it's going through a CUP process, because a restaurant is only required by CUP in the M1 zone. So, does that answer your question?
Well, my, my question really is, does the building that is already out there, that they're obviously just gonna modify the inside on, does it have the stuff that restaurants need? Does it have adequate parking? Does it have the grease trap, everything else, or whatever else that restaurants need? Or is this, was this building built for retail?
The building originally was built for a, a, a gas station retail purposes, but now the applicant is coming in and doing an additional use in the, in the area, I mean, in the, in the building. So, the building itself, it has the required parking and all of, it does need some additional landscaping that, that, that is gonna be required. However, the, the building itself has the amenities needed to do the use, however, the use is not allowed by right in the zoning district.
And I don't really, I mean, we're, we're kinda, I don't like adding uses that aren't necessarily intended for particular zones, but I don't necessarily have a problem with this one, as long as they are meeting all the other requirements necessary for a restaurant, so. That's all I got.
No, that's where I am, so long as it meets the UDC, it's good.
I have no comments either, Mayor, thank you.
Have you wrapped up your comments?
Yes, sir.
Let's move over to the council, starting with Councilmember Carbone.
Thank you, Mayor. On the staff write-up, they had some additional comments, and one of them listed the site must meet all fire code requirements. Is that not true with any site in the city?
Yes, sir, that is true of all the sites in the city.
Okay. So, why, why spell it out?
We can, for future preferences, we can remove that from additional staff reports, but it is required for all sites in the city.
They're not to follow the UDC and any corridor overlay, I mean, all that. Yeah, that just still leaves me scratching my head when we say they've gotta do something that everybody in the whole city has to do.
Right, yes, sir.
That, that's the only comment, I think it, it, like, the use makes sense, I'm fine with it.
Okay, Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I don't have an issue with this either. It's, we're putting a restaurant in a structure that's already there. I don't like that a gas station is in an M1 zone, but it's there, so might as well make good use of the facility that's there, and it sounds like that's what the applicant's doing, so I'm, I'm okay with that.
Okay, good.
No, no comments.
Okay.
I'll, I'll just echo Councilmember Carbone's, things that are already in the UDC, I don't want to see repeated if we don't need to.
Is it my understanding that the, the convenience store gas station's already there? And where the placement of the restaurant will be, will it have frontage on the, on the, on the Parkway? Access Road, or will it be fronting Tom Bass Park?
Why don't you come to the podium?
Well, I think staff can answer the question.
It's fronting the Sam Houston Parkway.
Okay, okay. All right, I don't have any problem with it.
Press?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm okay with the use to, to Commissioner Duncan's concern. Yeah, I mean, they're, they're gonna have to, if they don't have a grease trap in there, they're gonna have to add one. They probably don't have hood vents or sprinklers, so they'd have to add all that for the code. It's not easy to retrofit a retail space into a restaurant, but with respect to the use, I'm okay with it.
I guess the only, the only thing I have, you know, I don't have a problem with it either, as long as it go like any other restaurant would be with an impact fee and what have you, so.
Staff, complete your report. Staff report, wrap-up?
That's all, sir.
Just for a follow-up comment, Mr. Mayor and council, in reference to any additions as far as the grease traps, any additional parking, or any other issues, they have not been addressed on the existing ga, gas station. They will be addressed during site plan review. So, it still has to come back for permitting and all site plan reviews at that time. So, at that time, all those issues will be addressed, so that's all I have.
Good. I appreciate all that input. Let's move down to item C. Council put in new business, Councilmember Reed, would you present the, the resolution for our consideration?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration of possible action, resolution number R 2018- CUP 17- 00020, some who?
Second.
Is there motion in a second before us, Mr. Secretary?
Councilmember Reed? Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Moving to item five on our agenda, which permits me to adjourn this particular item, which I shall do at 7:27.
So, we'll go ahead and get started, and call to order the capital improvement advisory committee at 7:34 PM, January 29, 2018. Item two A under old, I guess there's no old business? It's on the, or is this old business?
So, this is an existing business, and Robert was on the due date, but this was brought in for you in December.
Okay.
So, we're bringing it back today.
So, item A, consideration cross-section, oh, I'm sorry, impact fees. I'll go ahead and turn it over to Robert.
Yep. Good evening, Commissioner, and P&amp;Z Council commissioned as the capital advisory, capital improvements advisory committee, we also know called a CAC. I'm Robert Upton, Director of Engineering and Projects. What we're coming back to you is that, when we met with you last time, we had developed our fee associated with what we had envisioned in terms of also including areas in our ETJ, ETJ as well. After careful review and taking a look back and looking at the composition of our board, is that we need to stay within the city limits that we have, and then also taking a look at the areas that were annexed in as well, and taking a look at those, those finalization of the annex areas, and how that impacted our fees. So, with this is that we have mostly is the same presentation. We will quickly go through those slides, you have those, and we'll get down to answering some of the questions that the board provided for us last time. My consultant with Friesen Nichols, Richard Weatherly, Weatherly will also be answering those questions and get to the final numbers. So, we should go through this pretty quick. Most of the slides are the same, but we want to just go through them briefly, answer those questions as necessary, and then open it up for any questions further. So, I'll turn this over to Richard, he'll go through the presentation, and again, I will answer those questions as they come along.
Thank you, Robert. Again, my name is Richard Weatherly with Friesen Nichols, office out of the Pearland Town Center. So, as Robert mentioned, this is, this is pretty much the revised presentation, using only the, the city limits this time. So, I'm gonna go quickly and get to the part, and highlight the parts that have changed. Everything else is going over the same exact information that I went over last time, you know, why the city is doing impact fees, how often it has to update. And getting to the process, this, so we're essentially back at the process we were back in December, revising the presentation we gave to you. The next step moving forward is going to a public hearing and council approval, and then the updating of the city's impact fee ordinance. From a, from a land use standpoint of what's changed, this is the similar map to what we showed last time. The area in Teal is the area that's included in our impact fee service area. As you can see now, a lot of the areas that were in the ETJ are no longer part of the, of the service area. And we've also included the recent, recently annexed areas into the city limits. That had really recently just happened last time I was here. The new population projections, another thing that, new information that we got was the existing 2017 population, that we got updated information from Jay. One question that, that the CAC had for us last time is, where is the city in 2017 relative to where we were projecting the city to be in 2017, when we did the impact fee study in 2012? And in fact, the city is further, has experienced more growth than what we were projecting back in 2012. Part of that could be due to, you know, more annexations happening. We kinda spaced those out, not really knowing exactly when they would happen, and they did just happen recently. And these are December 31st, 2017 populations on the actual. So, we're about, about 9,000 people further along. And then the new 10-year population is 149,563. Quickly show another map that's changed. One, another question that the commission had for us last time was the, a question about the lake park apartment complexes there in purple. I'm trying to, oh, there you go, you can't see it. This area right here just simply did not have a, a circle on it last time. We got with the planning department, and they provided the area. That population was, was counted last time, but we wanted just to highlight that, that is included this time. And so, the new 10-year growth in service units is 17,111. Again, the impact fee looks at a 10-year outlook, and so the growth in service units is part of the impact fee equation that I'll go through shortly. Similar CIP map on the water side, when we took out the ETJ, we, we essentially eliminated one project from our impact fee CIP altogether, and for the, for the rest of them, it was really the same projects, just a smaller util, percent utilization was used for the city limits, and those projects could be used for, the other portion of the projects were for the ETJ, and therefore, they're not counted anymore. And the total water eligible, impact fee eligible cost is 98 million. Same thing on the wastewater, all the projects were, were still needed, just a smaller percentage was, were utilized for, for the city limits only, and the wastewater impact fee eligible cost is $80 million. And so, as a reminder of the impact fee, the max allowable impact fee calculation per service unit, we can take a 50% of that max, of that eligible CIP cost, and divide it by the 10-year growth in service units to get the impact fee. We're allowed to use finance costs per the state law, and now the impact fee per service unit is 6,477. Ultimately, the, the, the max eligible costs go down when you exclude the ETJ, but also the max, or the growth in service units also goes down. So, the, the impact fee is a, is a similar number, it's about $100 difference from the last time we came and presented. And comparing to the, the benchmark cities, one question that the commission had for us last time is, you know, did the city utilize the max allowable impact fee last time? And this $4,875 was the max allowable impact fee, so the council adopted the full percentage. I believe in previous impact fee, impact fees that the city had, that there, maybe the max wasn't taken, but in the 2012 one, we went back and checked, double-checked that the max allowable was, was adopted. So, you know, really, you know, since it's only $100 off, we're still on the high side with the max allowable. We still included the dates for when the next impact fee updates would be, would be done for those cities. You know, as, in, in almost all the cases for these cities, you know, Friesen Nichols has done, done or worked on the impact fee for them, and they, they all typically see increases, so we can almost expect an increase the next time as well. Nothing's changed on the service units and how we administer the impact fee. When development comes in, we utilize this table for service unit factors, using the residential single-family equivalent as a baseline one unit. And then these are kind of the more, there's a, there's a table of 60-plus uses that the city utilizes to, to assess an impact fee, and these are just kind of the more common uses. And for an updated schedule, we're looking for comments from the CAC by February 8th, taking that recommendation to council on February 12th, so that they can set the public hearing date, which is now tentatively scheduled for March 26th, with an updated impact fee on the second reading of April 9th. And with that, take any questions?
Any questions? Sir, are we looking for an action tonight?
It's listed as consideration and possible action. If y'all want to approve the updates with the letter that y'all had last time, saying that the land use assumptions and the calculations seem to follow the law, and what you know you can. However, we've also, on the, the agenda that was provided, in case you had additional questions, I think we had an additional date built into the timeline, just in case y'all had questions that we needed to come back for.
I think the comments I had have been addressed, I'm, I'm good with it.
So, that being the case, if somebody wanted to make a motion to approve the impact fee as presented, with a second ten of votes on that, we would clear that off of your February 8th agenda. Okay, and one thing I would just ask is, if you pull down the microphone, just in case, yeah, mic's still there, I don't know if we're still recording or not, but I do want to make sure that those things are in the record if anybody has any questions.
Yeah, make a motion to approve the new impact fee calculations.
Can I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Have a motion in a second, all in favor, signify raising your right hand. Motion passes five zero.
Commissioners, thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Nothing else on?
Mr. Chairman, I'll be reporting the memo.
Okay. With nothing else left on the agenda, I will adjourn the capital improvement advisory committee and call to order the planning and zoning, regular planning and zoning meeting, January 29, 2018, at 7:44 PM. Let the record show that Mary Starr is not present, all other commissioners are present. So, item five of our consent agenda, we have a couple items on the consent agenda. Item one, excuse the absence of P&amp;Z Commissioners David Selsky and Troy Pratia from December 18, 2017, and approve the P&amp;Z regular meeting minutes from December 18, 2017. Does anybody wish to? I'll second. Have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda, all those in favor, signify raising your right hand. Motion passes five zero. Moving on to item six, new business. Item A, consideration and possible, consideration and possible action, amendment to the thoroughfare plan. As previously discussed in our joint public hearing. I see we have, so do any of the commissioners, do we need a, wish to make a motion to accept the thoroughfare plan as presented?
Yes, I would make a motion to accept the thoroughfare plan as presented.
I'll second. Have a motion and a second. We're in discussion. I heard a few comments that council had about the thoroughfare plan and the way it was marked and various, various things. I agreed with some of them and not with others, but as far as the plan as it was presented, as a minor revision, I don't have any issue with the way it was presented or wish to change anything. I think those things will work themselves out through council and further revisions. I agree.
See, my only, my only comment would be that whenever the major updates come through, that it's more public and I'm assuming like most other cities do, there's public meetings and workshops and all that kind of fun stuff, as opposed to this one which is such a minor update, it's mostly updating the map to what's actually existing.
Commissioner, that's correct with regards to that. On a major update, we'll be having a consultant onboard that'll be helping us through that process. We'll probably have some updates on some traffic modeling within those specific areas. So, therefore, there would be more public input on that. This is, development has occurred and has, we have wish lists when we put those, those drawings on there on vacant land. And as that development comes through and meanders through their development, how they want their development to look, we put a request known. They create that 60-foot, 80-foot right away. Now, we're just reflecting those approved plans finally.
And I do agree with you, but I also think you could have an airplane fall in the banner and most people still have no idea what's happening. So, unless they want to get involved, they're, they're not going.
Just one thing on the presentation part of it, I heard that, you know, we see, need to see an overlay. When, when does the city, when does this map get so detailed that you would want to break it up into, into bigger sections so that you can see that better? But it's just the way it's presented. It's hard to see on the screen. When you, when you point to an area and try to see it, it's hard to, hard to see it unless you're familiar with it. And the section we were talking about on Hughes Ranch Road, you could probably see with that overlay that, that it might not ever line up because of what's there. It might keep some of those comments from even being, being made. But anyway, I think it's good. I appreciate the, the effort. We have a motion and a second to, I guess, accept the amendment to thoroughfare plan as presented. Any further comments? All those in favor, signify raising your right hand. Motion passes 5-0. Moving on to item seven, one, Commissioner's Activity Report. Does anybody have anything to report? I have one resident reached out to me concerning the, fight Pearland Parkway, the gas station along Pearland Parkway and John Lizer, and asked about the tree mitigation plan and how they would find out if the tree mitigation plan was being followed. And I said, well, I don't know because I don't know who's that, who oversees that, but I said I would bring it up at our next meeting, possibly get it on our agenda to have staff report on, on that, that development, just so we know. I know it was a big concern when we talked about the trees, but that was brought to my attention by a resident and I thought we, I'd like to get that on the agenda, just to get a, a report on, on how that development's going with respect to the tree mitigation ordinance.
We can include it on the, the next upcoming agenda and just for reference, the person responsible for tree mitigation is our urban forest group. It's named Jerry Bradshaw. We can actually include that on the next agenda.
Okay. Appreciate it. Anything else? Moving on to item two, next meeting's February 19, 2018. Moving through the year quite fast already. I should be here if anybody else couldn't be here, just let them know as soon as, as soon as you know. Anything else? Hearing none. Will adjourn at 7:51.